Okay. It's seven o'clock. I will call this meeting of the school committee to order. I would like to start with a motion to adopt remote participation. And I will just read the motion. And can I, do I ask if you're not speaking to please put yourself on mute? Thank you very much. Okay, um, the motion is to adopt remote participation by all members of the school committee pursuant to and in accordance with sections two and three of the executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law made by the governor of Massachusetts on March 12th, 2020. Such adoption to be effective until said executive order is rescinded, or the Commonwealth state of emergency as referred in said executive order is terminated, whichever happens first.
So moved.
Okay, so let's move to roll call vote. Pam Nosecton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alstel Luca Sto, yes.
Okay, thank you very much and welcome everyone to this meeting of the school committee. I will move on to asking for any public comments which we do ask be submitted, you know, in writing to the superintendent first or, you know, through the chat. So Dr. Baquillen, have we received any public comment for today's meeting?
We have not.
Okay. I'd like to move on to the chair's report for the good of the organization. I, I, I do not have anything to add for tonight's meeting. Is there anyone else on the school committee? Who has anything that you'd like to mention for the good of the organization? Alice.
Um, I attended the recent vocational technical advisory council meeting. And that's a state level group. I attended to just speak on admissions. It's a very diverse group now unlike when it was started. It is extremely representative group. Young and old, a couple of students, very interesting to see them in operation. They are doing, as far as I can see, a much more thorough job of addressing the admissions discussion that we have had early in the year. I also learned that they are going to address exploratory sometime next couple of months.
Okay, thank you, Alice. Anything else? Okay, let's move on to the superintendent's report. Ed or Ford, which whoever would like to kick us off?
Ed, you want me to jump? I'll jump in. On the school building report, pretty quick, Dow is completing their last 10 or 11 projects that they have to do. And they are out there today and they'll be out here for a while next week. But that should wrap up. There's just a few minor things going on we're dealing with. The roof leak that we've been having and I think they've solved that one. So we're pretty much done. Somebody, we're pretty much done. So that's good. That's all related to the building. On the athletic fields, after a couple of walks with the Lincoln Conservation Agents and Cambridge Water, we finally agreed on what trees can come down on the Lincoln border where the, where the fields are. Those trees are down now and they've started to chip them up and they're doing some stumping. Work is now going to probably slow down. There's about six to 12 inches of frost, believe it or not, out there. And supposed to be cold the end of the week. So that's, they're on schedule. They're just, they're not going to do a lot of work with frost in the field when they're making field. That's, uh, that's pretty much where we are tomorrow. Monday night, there's a school building committee where we'll make our final vote accepting the ad alternates and then Kevin can start doing the bonding for the ad alternates. And that's about it, you know? Heimlich then can order some lights and things like that. So everything's progressing very, very nicely. Ed, you want me to make a motion?
Ford, before you do, can I just pause for a second and see if there's any questions?
Can I ask us one simple question? Do we have any? We were waiting for finding out what the interest rate was going to be for the funding for the fields for the, no, not yet.
No, we won't find that out till we go out for the bond, which we-
How soon is that going to be?
Kevin can answer specifically, but the next few weeks, I believe.
Okay, I just, the interest rates are starting to climb up again. So I'm just curious.
Yes, we've been working, working with Unibank Fiscal Advisors on this. We're trying to see if we can get the bonding done in either March or April, probably more likely April, because we have some document preparation we need to do. But we're trying to expedite that, given the current interest rate climate.
Okay, thank you. Um, I saw Judy had a question? No?
No, I, Jennifer got it first. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead Ford.
Why don't I make the motion on the solar energy contract and then we'll get a second and then you can add some questions. I make a motion to approve the contract with SOAT Energy and authorize the superintendent to sign it.
Second.
Okay, let's open it up for a discussion.
Jeff?
I must admit that I did not read every line of that contract, including an interesting attachment that showed the labor rate of thousands of different groups for some reason as part of the contract. So my question is, although we understand the intent of the contract and the important gist of it, who is it who has read it through completely? Understand that they didn't, there's nothing in there that is hidden that would cause us anxiety later in the future?
Well, on behalf of the district, there were three people who read it thoroughly. Beth Greenblatt, our consultant from, who's been our energy consultant for years. Our district attorney, Peter Summers, and then we hired a special attorney who did sort of the face-to-face negotiations with Select to work out some of the details that we were concerned about. So it's been thoroughly, I don't think there's been a contract I've seen that's been so thoroughly vetted. Not, not all the labor rates, but that was something they required.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate knowing that.
I will say the only change over the last few weeks is that the, the value of the, of the kilowatt hour moved about half a tenth of a penny, which benefited Minuteman. So otherwise, there was just a few things to work out with snow removal, which we did. I think that was kind of the biggest bugaboo. They wanted free access to, and I said, no. You have to coordinate with our facilities director and security, so.
Okay, other questions? Any other questions or comments? If not, we will move to a vote.
Alice has a question, I think.
Oh, thank you. I didn't see Alice's hand.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I did send a question about one of the labor rates to Bob and Bob was chasing it down earlier today. So, you know, there you go.
So Alice read it too, Jeff.
Okay. I'll take another moment, see if there's any other questions. Okay, let's move to a vote. Pam Nosecton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Alice Alstel Luca Sto, yes.
This is unanimously. Increasing in-person learning.
Yes, we've spoken about this a while. I've got a brief presentation to share just to go over what we've been thinking about. Now I lost everybody. Oh, there you are. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Good, 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 good. Oops. So Minuteman has enjoyed, I would say, a remarkable run when it comes to COVID. We've had zero transmissions from in-school activity. It's really been an incredible testament to the students and the staff who followed all the guidelines. Parents who keep their kids home if they're showing any kind of symptoms. And the incredible work of our nurses who probably spend four or five hours a day doing our own contact tracing if we suspect someone may have COVID or even if they're just showing symptoms and we follow up. So we were beginning to think about how can we bring back more kids for in-person learning? Because they need to. And so we're building on what's working. So the basic high altitude view of what we've been discussing and starting to plan is bringing another grade in for in-person academics. And that February 8th is the week before vacation week. And we're trying to target this date because if we find we need to tweak things or change something drastically, we'll have a week to do it. So we would have one grade in-person CTE and then add one grade in-person for academics. So we'd have two grades remote and two grades in-person. I had a meeting with the Minuteman Parent Association a few nights ago. I think there are about 50 or 60 parents in there. We talked about this at a high level. I've reviewed it with the Minuteman Faculty Association a little bit. We still have more things to work out, details to work out, but I wanted to give the school committee a general sense of what we're, we're looking at doing. So the academic schedule for in-person learning would be different than what it would be in a normal school year. What it, what's, what isn't different? So we'd have seven 45-minute periods. There'd be two 30-minute lunches in addition to the three lunches that we already have for the CTE folks. So we'd begin lunch kind of early for some kids, but to keep that social distancing, we need to do that. And we have the, the space to do it. The student union and off the student union is the, is the Paul Revere Room. There's still gonna, there's a little bit longer travel time between classes. One thing we added recently to our in-person learning week or to our hybrid model was this facilitated support time. We're going to maintain that. We're probably going to maintain that when we go back to whatever normal is, but there'll be, and then we won't be rotating the blocks at this point in time. It just adds a level of complication that just isn't necessary. And there'd be no advisory. We'd use that facilitated support time for that. We'd continue to do what we've been doing, following the DESI and CDC guidelines. DESI in their guideline says you can be three feet apart with masks in classrooms. So we've set up some classrooms to, to pilot this here at school. And those classrooms will hold between 18 and 22 kids. Again, we have hand sanitizer in every room. We'll add PPP as required or as requested. We're going to be maintaining the one-way traffic in the hallways. If you've been to school, you've seen the, the tape on the floor and all that. We're trying to schedule teachers so that there's a minimal of travel, minimal travel time. So the teachers will stay where they are. The larger classes, we're going to use the Paul Revere Room, which you recall can divide in half. And other spaces that we could deploy if we had a number of classes above 20, 22 kids. It looks like we would have to add a bus for the Arlington route in order to keep the social distancing intact on the, on the buses. Our buses right now can hold, I think it's 24 to 27 kids versus 40 to 50. So we would keep that social distancing on the bus. The other thing that I mentioned is that, as I spoke with the parents too, it is appropriate for the district to reimburse parents who drive their kids or their friends, friends, kids to school. We can actually pay them the, the federal reimbursement rate and then we could submit that to the state as part of our regional transportation expenditures. So we would get reimbursed for that. We don't think that'd be absolutely necessary, but if some families were more comfortable doing that, then we could accommodate. As we did in, in the beginning of the school year, teachers that may need some additional accommodations that make the requests known to me and then I would do what we need to do. Also, parents who wanted to keep their children home and full remote still have that option. We have some folks that are doing that now. So that's kind of the basic overview of the revision to our hybrid model. And questions?
Um, Jeff?
So, um, I think you answered my question. I have a comment as well. So the question would be again, are the teachers all in on this pretty much? And you said that if a teacher needs an additional accommodation, they talk to the superintendents. So theoretically, you'll be resolving those issues as we move along. So here's my comment. And it's really a very interesting time because today or yesterday, Needham decided to go fully remote because they have an outbreak. Tomorrow, Newton is starting hybrid, HiFlex. They were remote until, fully remote until now, and then tomorrow they're going to HiFlex. And now Minuteman is talking about going to 50%. Now, for the other members, just understand how complicated this could be. My understanding is that in Minuteman, the whole class is going to be there. So you don't have to break them into cohorts. Is that correct? And that's due to the class size and the building, the room size. Is that correct?
Yeah, generally that's correct, yes.
Okay, as long as you can do that, the complication of what you have to do is only this big. Newton can't do that because the class sizes are too big and the rooms are too small. So they were going to go up to as many as possible, four cohorts that they were talking about. But they didn't have to do that. They only had to go to two cohorts, partly because the number of teachers who cannot come in the building and the number of families who decide that their teachers remain, their students remain at home. So instead of having to do as many as four cohorts, which means that each student would be only two days every two weeks, they only have two cohorts. And even with two cohorts, the complexity is in order of magnitude of scheduling and moving kids around, more challenging than what you have to do here at Minuteman. So I think that what you're doing, especially with your track record, is very doable. And the, the parents who want to opt out can opt out and the teachers you're making an accommodation for. So I feel very comfortable with what you're doing and how you're doing it and with your track record. And again, even though it's much less complicated than when you have to have cohorts, I still understand the, the challenge of laying out every room so it's safe of, of, of laying out the hallway so they're one way and of the new paths that students have to go to and the organization lunches. Believe me, I have a really good idea of that and I greatly appreciate the long-term thoughtfulness that I have seen from the staff and you, Dr. Baquillen, to make me comfortable enough to be able to, when necessary, to vote to approve this change. So that's, that's my comment, based on the interesting characteristic of being on the school, on the school committee signing off on these things and as a teacher being the taker of one of these things at the same time. Okay, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. Ed, could you give us a little overview of in your meeting with the Minuteman Parents Association? Sort of their, their, their feedback and if there are any particular concerns?
I think there were concerns about the sketch, about the details. I, what would, there were some questions about the details we couldn't answer, but we probably will be able to answer end of this week, the beginning of next week. Generally, the, I would say 80% of the comments were very positive that parents were hoping to get their kids into in-person learning more. I should mention, there's also a group of kids that we've identified that we'd like to get into the building in person every day. They're at risk. They might be failing because of attendance or failing because they aren't showing up or doing their work. So we're looking at, and this is a separate effort than this one. And we're still working out on who those kids are, how they would get to school, how they would be in the, in the school with the rest of the students, but so I think there were some parents who may be aware of some of the struggles that their kids and other kids may be having and you know, there were some, I should mention there, there, there were some questions about testing, about the vaccine. You know, the vaccine is, it seems to be, well, if there's enough supply, we, we may be earlier in that phase two grouping than we thought we would have been a week or two ago. So the timing may work out that a lot of, a lot of staff are going to be vaccinated that choose to get vaccinated. The, the testing, the testing is problematic from a number of different points of view. The pool testing, which some schools are doing, was really not appropriate for Minuteman. And I think, I don't know if you know how that would have worked, 20 to 25 samples, get put into one, get pooled into one sample. And if any one of that tests positive, then all 25 have to be quarantined. But then when you look at it deeper, if any of those 25 who are in that pool were out in the building, I mean, it could have a cascade effect and you'd be shutting the whole building down in a day because you had one person test positive in a pool of 25 in a school of 600, you know? So it just was, it, I couldn't see the logic in it for Minuteman and neither could the school nurse and, and some of the other testing if we, you know, testing is fine, but when you think about it, you find out if they're negative or positive sort of after the fact. There's some other testing that one of the parents was particularly telling me about that it'll be able to tell how someone is shedding a virus and what level of virus they have in them. And that's the kind of test that would really be helpful because if you had someone showing symptoms, you know, early in the morning, you could get them tested and know whether or not they should be isolated or, or whatever. And if they've had any kind of a close contact with folks, you'd have a better way to manage that close contact. So you know, we're a fairly small school compared to what other cities are dealing with in larger school districts, K through 12, and I really admire a lot of the planning that's gone on and a lot of the implementation in many of our school districts, Lexington in particular. You know, it, we just haven't had to do that and we've had zero transmission. So I don't want to put a solution on a problem we don't have.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from the school committee? Judy?
Thank you. Um, thank you again, everyone who's been working on this. This is your, your patience, your flexibility. We've all been waiting for this next step, but it's, it's, you know, with holding that breath at the same time. So thank you. I had a question. You mentioned possibly reimbursing parents for carpooling. I just, and I apologize if, I just, I haven't heard that before. I mean, understanding everybody's more than two miles from the school and it's a high school anyways. But if you're going to, you know, and I understand the federal reimbursement rate per mileage. But my question is, is there any type of liability for the school if we're going to be, you know, financing or potentially financing this, you know, beyond, you know, including quarry checks?
No, from what I understand, the, it, being a regional school, we get regional transportation aid. And I don't know if there were some special regulations. But this came from the commissioner's office. Directly from Bill Bell, I think, who's the chief financial officer for the Department of Ed. He said you could reimburse, regional schools could reimburse and then submit those expenditures as part of our transportation reimbursement submission at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. That is clarified. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Yeah, and I'd like to also underscore what Judy said in appreciation of all the, all the work that has gone into this planning on everyone's part. You know, the administration, the teachers, you know, staff, students, family members. So it's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you. It's, I haven't done much. I just asked them to do it.
Help put together the team.
And we got more work to do, but I'm excited to think about having kids in school again, more kids in school anyway.
Right. Um, Alice?
Um, I think based on your track record with the previous implementation with 25%, that, you know, you're going to solve the problems that occur when you get to a larger group. I, I have full confidence in that. I was, you know, initially very nervous when you started the 25% and, but you, you addressed everything and I think it's great that the kids have been so cooperative, the families, the, the teachers, everybody cooperating, not just in the school, but when they're not in the school to make sure that this works. And I think that's really a, a positive sign that the next phase is going to work too. And that you have the flexibility to adjust as you see, as you see a need to adjust.
Yeah, that's the key. Everybody doing their part. Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions and comments, we will move on. I do want to acknowledge that there was a question in the chat and if we're not-
I can deal with it quickly here.
Okay, go ahead.
The question was, and this is unusual for the school committee to engage and answer questions, but given the, given the, let's use the word we all love, the unprecedented times. So the question was, if one person tests positive after being in school, is the entire grade considered contact? Probably considered close contact? No. It would depend where that student was and what classes they were in. And people would be notified if they were a close contact and they would ask to be tested. Or if the nurses determined it was a close contact, they'd be asked to isolate. It's really no different than what we've been doing. So thanks Pam.
Okay, thank you, Ed. And I was going to say, you know, normally we do not take questions throughout the meeting. And I was going to say, you know, normally, we do not take questions throughout the meeting, but as Ed said, these are unprecedented times, and thank you for responding to that. Um, let's move on to finance report, and Steve or Bob, who's going to kick us off?
Uh, I, I can kick it off. We had, our last meeting of the finance committee was last Wednesday inauguration day. Our primary business was to go over the superintendent's budget presentation, which we, we saw during the public hearing. And our, our committee unanimously supports the, the budget as proposed. So Pam, I'm not sure, do you want us to start making motions, or how do you want to do this?
Um, why don't we start with, with our motions, and then we can take our discussion, you know, as appropriate?
Okay, so I would move to authorize five hundred and forty thousand dollars from the certified E and D to reduce member town assessments for the FY twenty-two budget.
Second.
Okay, so let's open it for discussion or questions. Any questions?
So what is the current E and D amount total?
It's, it's a little over seven hundred thousand dollars, so we have plenty of room.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Luca Stowe, yes?
Okay, thank you, passes unanimously.
I would now like to move to approve the FY twenty-two budget in the amount of twenty-seven million, six hundred and forty thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars as presented by the superintendent this evening.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we'll open it up to questions and comments. And I believe, Michael, I might have cut you off earlier on a question.
Ah, that's quite all right, thank you, Pam. No, I, I was going to suggest that in the final slide where we present the overall budget, then the number being assessed to the towns, you know, the second is obviously less than the first. People are going to ask, where's the difference? You know, what else makes that up? It won't be obvious to people what the other sources are. So I would simply suggest for the buzz, budget presentations to the town meetings, we, you know, add that last detail into the final slide of how it balances out.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Other, um, questions or comments? Alice?
Uh, I forwarded this to a member of the Board of Selectmen, who's the liaison from our town to Minuteman and to the town manager, and asked for questions, and I did not receive any questions.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll move on to a vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Luca Stowe, yes?
Okay, thank you, passes unanimously.
Okay, and finally, I move to approve the FY twenty, twenty-two preliminary assessments of nineteen million, four hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars as presented by the superintendent.
Second.
Questions or comments? Jeff? Then Alice?
I just want to take a minute to thank both members of the administration who worked on the budget this year, and the members of the finance subcommittee. Uh, there are a lot of interesting things about this budget that make it, you know, a little bit harder to get your head around than normal. The timing of the pandemic, the new building, the, the unexpected costs of the electric work, the building project, the fields, the lights. So I think that philosophically, it was pretty hard to get it to the form that, that it is pretty uncontroversial despite the increases. I think part of that is the groundwork that was done, and the quality of the present, presentations that have been made. So I thank you for that. So it made it much easier to digest and explain what's happening in this particularly difficult year. So that's, I have no questions, that's the only comment I wanted to make.
Thanks, Jeff. Alice?
Um, I just wanted to remark that, once you vote the assessments, you cannot increase them, you can only decrease them. So you're drawing this particular line in the sand when you take this vote.
Thank you, Alice. Other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move to a vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Luca Stowe, yes?
Okay, Steve, anything else from the finance committee? Before I add my thanks to all of you, Bob and Ed and everything for a tremendous amount of work, thank you.
Yep, that'll do it for us, for now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to subcommittees and policy subcommittee, Alice?
Okay, this is actually relatively simple. We, at the last meeting, voted to approve three policies for first reading and to delete one. We had some discussion on them, as you recall, and there were no changes requested. So I'm just going to ask if we can have a motion to approve J F A B relating to homeless students, J F A B relating to military children, and J F A B F relating to foster care. And then I'll make a second motion to delete the old copy of J F A B D. These policies are on page one forty-nine, one fifty-two, and one fifty-four of your packet.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so discussion. No discussion?
Okay. Okay, let's, um, let's move to vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Luca Stowe, yes, thank you. The second one is a motion to delete the existing version of the homeless student policy, which is J F A B D. It's on page one fifty-six of your packet, and it is now deprecated by our adopting a new version.
Still moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Okay, Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes?
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes?
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes?
Ford Spaulding Dover, yes?
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes?
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes?
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes?
Alice Luca Stowe, yes, thank you very much. We'll be bringing back B E D H, which is about public participation or public comment at school committee meetings at the next, probably at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Alice and Judy, and anyone else on the subcommittee, and Amy?
Amy, 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 what would we do with that?
Very much, thank you, Amy. Okay, strategic planning task force report, Ford?
Thank you, Pam. Pam, Alice, and I are recommending that we continue the work that we started with our school committee retreat back in January twenty-five, two thousand twenty. Couple of members weren't part of that, so we'd like to bring them into that. We're going to be suggesting a second retreat for on a Saturday. If you don't mind doing that, a Saturday in March at some point. You have to be defined probably near the middle to the end, but we'll take a look at that. And the purpose is really to continue to define our leadership goals for the Minuteman School Committee to consider. We are recommending that we engage Jeff Lawrence, organizational agility advisors, to assist us and lead us in that retreat. Jeff is currently working with the Minuteman executive team and the superintendent on leadership, and what we liked about, we interviewed him. He's a very engaging person, I think he's going to help us a lot. He's a very strong believer in vocational education and, and a real proponent of Minuteman. And I think he understands the Minuteman faculty well, the students, and what's going on. So I thought, we thought that was a natural to bring him in as a consultant to, to help us. So, and he's charging us probably five thousand dollars to do this, advised by the administration that they've approved it, so we don't need a motion to, to do that. And we will start working with him to develop that retreat. Really, I think it's next week or the week after, we're going to start our work with him to get ready for the retreat. So you'll hear more about it as we go along, but we are very excited about this, and, and I, the last one was extremely successful, thanks to really the administration that helped us lead that. We had three people helping us, but I think Jeff is going to be an added addition, so. That's my report, I don't think we need a motion unless I'm wrong. And we're making that report, and you'll hear a lot more from us as we go along. Judy?
Are you going to send out a doodle poll or something like that, Ford, so we, to get to select the date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Julia will assist with that, Ford.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
Other questions? Uh, Michael, I can't tell if you're raising your hand.
I did, sorry, I'm having slow response time here. What's the expected time commitment for something like that, Ford?
For a retreat, it would probably, we did it about half a day, half, you know, last year on a Saturday. But I would say maybe four to five hours.
And this would be virtual?
Uh, it'll be virtual unless something changes between now and March.
That's a long sit.
With breaks?
Hey, it's too bad it'll be virtual, because we had a very nice, you know, coffee and Danish and all that by the school, and they took very good care of us. But that's life in the big city.
Uh, is there any way we can consider doing it in person if we ascribe to something like the same rules that the kids are coming back to?
Um, I'm not smart enough to answer that question right now. My assumption would be no, but you know, we could look into it.
We could, Julia can survey the school committee and add some questions that the strategic planning subcommittee reviews.
Thank you.
As your plan for that.
Having it remote, because the lobster, the prime rib, and the champagne they served were just absolutely terrible.
Well, I'm going to serve that, I'm going to serve that in Five Hutten Road in Dover, but you know, we'll see what happens.
We all know that Jeff is joking.
We could all have exactly identical snacks.
But I, you know, I think with Zoom with us, I think it would work. I think we'd, you know, we're not a shy group, and I think it will work well. But, and Jeff is, you know, he's going to do a great job for us.
Yeah, and, and I do want to just acknowledge Michael's concern at the beginning that it is a long time to sit, and we could not do anything for that length of time without, I'm sure, as we designed it and work with Jeff, if it, you know, we do end up having it remote, you know, we'll have breaks, and people will have an opportunity within that period to move.
Yeah, we're going to have breaks, and we just, one nice thing is, we probably won't need a mask break.
Okay, any other questions for, for Ford, or the strategic planning task force?
Jeff could wear his mask, but other than that, we'll be all right.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Oh, did I hear someone? Oh, thank you, everyone. We do not have minutes to review today. Alice, do you have anything else under secretary's report? If not, I would like to entertain a motion to enter executive session and to return to open session, and the motion is as follows, pursuant to per yes?
Um, we could dispense with executive session if you'd like, unless a school committee member has some questions for me.
Um, thank you, um, thank you, Ed. Is there, I guess, unless I hear from a school committee member, if someone indicates right now, we will dispense with executive session and just move to the final item on the agenda. Is there any?
I just want to clarify, the reason we can do this is because we did discuss this in executive session at the last meeting, we just didn't have it on to return into regular session. So this is kind of just a formality, I'm good with this, if everybody else is.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Then our final item on the agenda, you know, I would like a motion to approve the contract extension with non-union personnel, namely the superintendent director, Dr. Edward McQuillan.
So moved.
And if I may, Adam, sure, the, the contract extension would be entered into the minutes and approved and be in the public record. Because it was reviewed in executive session.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely. Oh, go ahead.
Second.
We have a second, okay. Um, Jennifer, do you want, do you have any comments that you want to make at this point from?
No, I think that this is, it's fairly simple. I think that, given everything that's going on, we've asked Ed if he'd be willing to just, rather than go through the full contract negotiation process, just do a one-year extension, we can revisit next year, we can figure out what's going on. It's just, it's a, it's a fairly simple, straightforward. The contract doesn't change, this is a one-year addendum that just adds in that one year.
Any questions or comments?
No, and I'm deeply appreciative and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Uh, it's very, very easy for me to approve this. Uh, I think I'm very pleased with how you've handled, you and your staff have handled COVID. And I'm very impressed with how we've been able to, through your leadership, move on a number of really valuable issues for the school and the future of the school, and how you were able to take advantage of opportunities that have popped up over this timeframe to present some of these options to us. And I'm referring to both to the lighting and the, the work being done to look at increasing the capacity of the school at a very low fee. So for all these reasons here, I, I want to say that in public. I'm very happy to be able to vote on this, and I thank Jennifer and the group who negotiated with you to bring this process forward so smoothly. And I'd be very happy to vote yes on this in a minute.
Thank you.
So I saw Judy, then Alice. Oh, no?
No, just with gratitude, thank you.
Then Alice is next.
I'm so really happy to vote yes on this. I, you know, when you think about start building a new school, then having to close a new school due to a hundred-year pandemic, and figure out how to operate the school partly open during the pandemic, and also think about, you know, making, taking care of the kids who are on the waitlist, maybe expanding to allow more kids to come in all at the same time. It's just phenomenal, I have no problem voting yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, um, and again, you know, before we move to roll call, I just also want to add my appreciation, you know, for your flexibility with this, um, extension and, and your leadership, you know, the, just, you know, just want to add my voice about just how extraordinary it's been particularly over, you know, so many difficult issues at once.
Thank you.
Alice?
You know, I think I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge that Dr. McQuillan has a very talented staff, and that, you know, it's not him by himself that's doing all these marvelous things, but he's leading the group, and so I think, you know, that we're renewing for a year. I'll vote to renew for a year, but I'm fully aware that there's just an enormous number of people who are pulling together to make things work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, well said, Alice. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, let's move Okay, if there are no other, um, questions or comments, let's move to a vote. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor, absolutely yes.
Dave Ledoux Concord, yes.
For Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Ed. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. And, you know, and again, thank you to, you know, the rest of, uh, the staff as well for, you know, all your extraordinary work.
And I got to say, I have, the school committee is the best I've ever worked with. So I thank you for helping me get done what we need to get done and the staff I've got that are getting it done, you know? This really is a remarkable time for many reasons, good and challenging.
Um, thank you, Ed. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. We'll move to roll call. Pam Nurse acting, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Dave O'Connor Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
For Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Uh, Alice Lucas, so yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Next school committee is February 9th. So see you all then.
See you soon. Be safe. All right.